Oh, there she is. I was, I didn't see him. I'm like, did you talk to Krista? They had the Chateau meeting. You're not going to believe it. Bob Bell wants to take all of the triggers between the Duncan Canal and Chateau because energy put these in the top of them and put them out. I'm like, I'll look into it, but because it looked... Yeah, we're going to get, go ahead. One, one minute.
Can everyone take their seat so we can get the meeting started? Do we have any special intentions today?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, Council President. Please remember, and I apologize, I did not write the name down, but Kenny Ford's mother passed away recently in the services where yesterday. He's a longtime Kenner resident, and please keep his mother and her family in your prayers. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, please remember our former councilman Gregory Carroll, his sister passed away on the other day.
Thank you. I would ask Pastor Dean Ross from the Family Church in University City, could you come to the mic and lead us in prayer?
Happy St. Patrick's Day. Everybody looks good in green. It's awesome. So, let's go to the Lord in prayer. I'm going to open up and close with part of St. Patrick's Prayer this morning. I rise today through God's strength to pilot me, God's might to uphold me, God's wisdom to guide me, God's eye to look before me, God's ear to hear me, God's word to speak for me, God's hand to guard me, God's way to lie before me, God's shield to protect me, God's host to save me from the snares of the devil, from the temptations of vices, from everyone who desires me ill afar and near. Lord, we pray today for our leaders here in the city of Kenner. We pray for Mayor Glazer and his administration. Lord, we pray for our police chief, fire chief. Lord, we pray for our council here today as we consider important matters. Lord, we pray for peace and resolution, Lord, and all the things coming up, Lord, whether it be recycling, government contracts, whatever that might be, God. Lord, we pray that you would guide our city in what to do that is right and good for the good of other people. Lord, we love you and we thank you for this awesome day. Lord, even as it rains, Lord, we're reminded that you provide for us. You provide the food for us. Lord, you provide sustenance for us. Lord, and even on a day like today, Lord, Friday during Lent, Lord, we thank you for all the seafood that's going to be grilled up, God. We thank you for the parties that are going to happen tonight. Lord, through all that, let us never forget how good you are. And in closing, we pray, Christ with me, Christ before me, Christ behind me, Christ in me, Christ beneath me, Christ above me, Christ on my right side, Christ on my left, Christ when I lie down, Christ when I sit down, Christ in my heart, every man who thinks of me, Christ in my mouth, every man who speaks of me, Christ in my eye that sees me, Christ in the ear that hears me. I arise today. Lord, today I close asking that anyone, Lord, we come here from different creeds, backgrounds, religions, everything. Lord, we just pray that you would guide us today for the good of your people. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Pastor Ross, thank you for that prayer. We appreciate you being here. Councilmember Dunn, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. We have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Glazer?
Thank you. Went through a couple of things, and then we have a brief presentation on the new recycling bins we have coming. January and February sales tax, we're down a little bit in the city of Kenner, around seven percent. We may have a catch-up in a couple of months if there was some late taxes coming in, but as is now, January, February, we're down. Yesterday, Jefferson Parish Legislative Delegation, we met on the Capitol Outlay Projects throughout Jefferson Parish where we talked about the ones that we submitted for Capitol Outlay Projects, and a large majority of them are infrastructure, mostly drainage stuff. But I know Councilman Ronnie will be happy that the first one on the list is the Roosevelt Boulevard improvements that are already, they're underway. It just doesn't look like there's any construction going on because we had to do the traffic studies first and the design. It was at thirty percent design finish, I think I saw this week. So, that's on the list, seven and a half million dollars. Phase two of the Lincoln Manor Drainage Improvements was the second one on the list. South Kenner Drainage Improvements, which is Williams Boulevard right here between the tracks and Reverend Richard Wilson that floods every spring. Susan Park Drainage Improvements, that's just drainage improvements throughout Susan Park. The wastewater system corrective measures, this has been going on for many, many years. We have three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars already allocated to the project of state capital outlay, but we need another little over four million, four million and sixty-four thousand dollars. So, that's what we request. The new Duke Street Fire Station, it's a four and a half million. A big one that we have, a million dollars from Capitol Outlay, already given to us for the design is the pump to the river here in South Kenner. As of today, it's a fourteen million dollar project that we're asking for. Compromised Street Drainage Improvements, Jefferson Highway to the railroad tracks is the same thing. It's an aged system that needs to be upgraded. Improvements to the Twenty-Fourth Street in Delaware sewer lift stations, Buddy Lawson Playground, concession stand and press box. Some of these have been left over for, they've been in Capitol Outlay requests for several years. Improvements to Musburger Lino Regional High School Stadium, Kenner City Park Phase Two, which is three new gazebo's, Loyola restriping, which was done, and that's it on the Capitol Outlay. Jefferson Parish Council just approved some cooperative endeavor agreements that we get every year, various federal funded programs. Fifty-six thousand for a fitness-related equipment we're going to have at one of the parks. It should be coming in the next couple of months with one of the Rotary Groups also donating some money for the equipment. A grant for communication headsets, four thousand dollars. Twelve thousand for night vision goggles and Delta Four ballistic helmets from U.S.C. Monies, that's the Urban Area Security Initiative, and four laptops and one portable smartboard and one portable desk for fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. It's all grants that we get through the federal government for security and emergency stuff, most of that stuff there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Natalie Newton, and she'll give you the presentation on the recycling bins and how it's going to work.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to start by thanking the residents who've been patient and understanding through the transition. Our employees, particularly those fielding, your emails and phone calls are extremely grateful to those who've been courteous, and we recognize you are upset and inconvenienced, and please remember, we live here too. Neither is what we ever intended. So, to start with the recycling update, everyone is aware, Romelli Janitorial has begun providing recycling and drop site services for the city of Kenner. This was effective March first. Residents will receive a thirty-two gallon green recycling cart with wheels and a lid. As of yesterday, the green recycling carts with the wheels and lids are on schedule for delivery this Monday, March twentieth. Beginning Wednesday, Romelli will start distributing the cans and will continue distribution through Saturday. This may take over a two-week period. All recycling pickup days will remain the same. Route maps can be found on the city's website, and recycling is your second collection day. All garbage pickup days will remain the same. Ivy Waste continues to provide garbage collection services. Drop site hours remain the same, Saturday and Sunday, nine a.m. to three p.m. At the drop site now, residents will have access to complimentary mulch from the drop site during normal operating hours, as I mentioned, Saturday and Sunday, nine a.m. to three p.m., and it is based upon availability. And with that, we're going to move into some frequently asked questions that we have received through social media and the email inquiries that we have received. Do I have to request a new city-owned receptacle, the green one with wheels and a lid? No, but it is encouraged. As we begin with a new service provider, we are asking residents to confirm their participation in the recycling program to ensure all who wish to recycle are serviced. Again, this is based on eligibility if you receive curbside services. Until I receive a bin, how can I recycle in the meantime? Recyclables can be placed next to your garbage can in a plastic or paper bag on your scheduled recycle pickup day, which is the second day of collection. Can I get the previously used green recycle bin removed? We've had some residents who say they don't want that. If you want the bin removed, please let us know by emailing cokcommunications with an S at kenner.la.us or by calling five oh four four six eight seventy-two forty, and we will send someone out to remove it. We also understand that some residents may not want the wheeled cart. The small bins are certainly easier to store, so again, please use those same channels to communicate this request, and we will take care of it. How do I arrange for Ivy Waste to pick up my black recycling bin? Ivy Waste has not given the city nor any contractor permission to remove or handle their cans. We cannot touch them. We encourage any resident with this encounter to call Ivy Waste at five oh four two two four eight four seven one and request that that black can be removed. What is the process for disabled residents? I know we covered this at the last meeting, but I will say it again. Residents with disabilities may request side door service. Appropriate documentation is required. Please call us, five oh four four six eight seventy-two forty, or email cokcommunications at kenner.la.us. Are there any other ways in which this transition is being communicated? Yes, in addition to the various social media channels, this information has been provided on the homepage of the city's website, city's government access channel, which is Channel Seventy-Six for Cox customers, and Channel Ninety-Nine for AT&amp;T customers. And this information, these FAQs and the updated recycling will be going up shortly. We were presenting it here first at the council meeting. I just want to let people know that, you know, the communication has been required to be delivered quickly and in an ever-changing fashion. That phone number is readily available through multiple outlets, Google, Yellow Pages, however you like to get it, but I'll repeat it one more time, four six eight five oh four four six eight seventy-two forty. Please call us. That is it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request to change the order of business to take Item Eighteen A at the beginning of the meeting. I could get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan, to change the order of business. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero to change your order of business. Item Eighteen A, at the request of the administration, an executive session regarding the following: Michael Dunn versus the City of Kenner, Number Six-Eight Seven Dash One Nine Seven, O, Twenty-Fourth Judicial District Court.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan, to adjourn into executive session. Councilmembers in favor, say aye. Aye. Nay, if you are opposed.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. We will now be in executive session for a temporary period of time.
We will be reconvening in one minute. Please take your seats. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan to reconvene. Council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
See none, motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Chairman, I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to authorize the settlement in the lawsuit entitled Michael Dunn et al. versus the City of Kenner and the Twenty-Fourth Judicial District Court for case number six eight seven dash one nine seven, Division O.
Is there anyone from the council wanting to speak on this issue?
Just Council President, thank you. As you all know, that I am retired from Kinnipar, and when this lawsuit was initiated, I am a part of lawsuit. Therefore, I did not attend the executive session, and also, I might have to refuse myself or abstain from any vote concerning this matter.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Lahat?
Yeah, for the public's interest, this discussion of the settlement was actually on public record in case titled six eight seven dash one nine seven, Twenty-Fourth JDC. It's not confidential, it's out there. There's a proceedings that took place recently. I'm discussing the various moving parts of this, so I would encourage you, if you want to get into that, to look at six eight seven one nine seven and Twenty-Fourth Judicial District Court over in Greta.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Council President. First off, this lawsuit has been pending for quite some time, as many of us know. It needs to be addressed, it's about time that it be addressed, because you just can't keep letting these things sit for periods of time. There's interest that's compiling, and a lot of other costs, and it's just growing and growing and growing. Our firefighters demand and are due the resolution to this matter. It needs to happen. We need to bring it to a conclusion. I know we have a significant amount of money involved in this, and this is, to me, it's a concern. It should be done in a procedural manner, that the council doesn't even have really anything set up for this magnitude. What we do have is anything in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars must be brought before the council, that's it. To me, there should be more processes and procedures in place, and we don't have that at present, so I do have a problem with that. But I would like, if we could, I don't know if the city attorney has the figure of this settlement, and if he could disclose that?
I actually do not have the figure, however, our attorney representative has the number. I don't have the number of Craig Watson. Basically, the amount has been determined.
Sure, this is Craig Watson outside counsel for the record for the City of Kenner. The settlement is proposed for recommendation to the council, which was discussed in executive session. It constitutes delinquent contributions, interest, and accrued liability assessed for recalculation of retiree benefits owed to the City of Kenner firefighters in the total amount of three million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand forty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. That would be amateurized to the city's benefit over a thirty-year amateurization period in order to lessen the fiscal burden on the city. In addition, the city will be seeking additional funding to offset this amount through the insurance premium tax fund, which can contribute potentially up to an amount of forty percent of the overall burden, which could be in excess of a potential of a million-dollar recovery for the city to offset that amount. If the city were to receive that amount of money from the insurance premium tax, that would lessen the payment plan and/or the term at the city's pleasure at a future meeting, which will be discussed. In addition, in order to access that additional money from the insurance premium tax, the city has agreed to provide, should it vote so, twenty thousand dollars towards the actuarial services in order to proceed with facilitation of the settlement. Ultimately, the settlement will resolve any and all claims of the Kenner firefighters in the reference suit. Each party will agree to indemnify, defend, and hold each other harmless. This settlement is being recommended for approval by the city council.
And if you can, I have a couple more questions from you.
Sure.
One, I know it's just recently we found out about these figures. So my question to you is, is do you have any problems if we have a deferral, a one-meeting deferral on this matter?
There is. So in answer to your question, there's no legal impediment to a deferral. There are several factors, though, that would militate in favor of an expeditious approval of this matter. Specifically, access to that insurance fund, the sooner that we can start that process, the faster we can get that money in. In addition, the first payment would be due under July first, and we also need to seek approval from FRS's board. In addition, given the complexity, the number of plaintiffs in this case, and the actuarial assessment of the liability, the City of Kenner would have to undertake its process through its internal administration in providing copious amounts of documents to the FRS in order to commence the process of recalculation of those retiree benefits. So the answer to your question is, there's no legal impediment to a deferral, but the administration and its legal counsel are recommending an expeditious approval of this process.
The FRS, though, they haven't made a ruling as of yet either, correct?
That is correct. The FRS, my understanding from speaking with their counsel, is that they're seeking to get an expedited meeting. As it currently stands, the next FRS board retirement meeting is April thirteenth. Their counsel has indicated that they are requesting a special setting to advance that in order to proceed with the process of getting this matter expeditiously put before the PERSAC board to seek that additional recovery and recalculations of the firefighters' benefits.
So if we lay this over one meeting, this would be, in two weeks, we have our next meeting, roughly. If we have our meeting in two weeks, we could probably still have a vote on this before FRS does. a vote on this before FRS does.
So, the answer to your question is that there is neither a legal provision as espoused in the settlement, as Mr. Lahat had indicated that this matter is a public record before the judicial. We did not put a specific date at which this council was required statutorily or mandatory pursuant to the settlement release to approve that. So, we do not have to, as a matter of law or precedent, decide today. However, in all settlement matters, the sooner you can get it done, the less potential there is to have the settlement thwarted, which if it did, you would have a continued interest burden that would be associated with any protracted litigation that would ensue from a failure of this matter not being approved on this date.
You have the interest...
Councilman, there's also the consideration that this may have to go before the State Bond Commission for approval, since it is a very large, long-term debt, far beyond a fiscal year. They would have, we have to get on their agenda, which doesn't happen overnight.
But that's going to happen after FRS has its meeting anyway, not before.
Yes.
Yeah, so it shouldn't hinder anything by having a one-meeting deferral, is my point, from what I'm hearing. So, with that in mind, I ask that we have a one-meeting deferral on this matter.
Substitute motion.
Councilmember Lahat?
This problem is, this is a 24-year-old problem. This case originated in 1999.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, does he got a turn?
That's okay, hold on. We have a motion for a one-meeting deferral on the floor. Do I have a second to the one-meeting deferral?
No.
See none, motion fails for one-meeting deferral. I'm sorry, now you can speak, Councilman Lahat.
This is a problem stemming from 1999. The litigation that went up to the Supreme Court started way back then. These firefighters have waited long enough to deal with this. Like, I've been hearing about this when I first got in Kenner. There was a major fireman retirement fund problem, the city, that originated a long time ago. And they jumped into it, the administration jumped into it, evaluated a lot of different things. It is public record. There is, it's out there in the case. I don't want the firefighters to wait any longer. I think we need to deal with this today. I'm voting we do it. We had a very extensive discussion, and what Craig just said was told to us back there. So, I'm for it, I think we need to do it today.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Just to follow up, this is something we just found out about. This is a procedural issue, and I have no problem necessarily with settling this matter. That's not my issue. My issue is one of procedure. We don't have anything in place. This thing should lay over so the public can be aware, and we can better think about it, at least overnight. My God, we're talking about $3.8 million, and we just found out about it less than an hour ago. And we're going to vote on this? And this is something that we're, hey, let's go ahead and push this forward? That's not right. We have a procedural flaw with our, the way we're doing this today. We just had this, just not, what, a meeting or two ago? With the Remella issue, that was 1.2 million. This has got to stop. This is not right. This is not the way to conduct business of the people's taxpayers' dollars. I got a problem with it. Anyway, it's not, it's not the issue. I don't have a problem with the issue. We need to address it. It does need to be addressed. This thing's been going on long enough. I agree 100%. But procedurally, it needs to lay over so everybody can absorb it. Think about it overnight, not just within an hour and vote on it. Not this kind of money. It's not, it's just not right. So, with that, if this, and apparently it's going to a vote, I anticipate abstaining, and that's the reason why. Thank you.
Councilman? Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council President. I respect what you're saying, Councilman Wilmot, but the agenda was released to us on Monday. Monday afternoon, my office reached out to the administration, and the legal department was given all of this information. So, the numbers were available. And as Councilman Lahat has said, this has been going on. The administration, in my opinion, has done a very, very good job, and I'm kind of jumping ahead in what I was going to talk about in a little bit. And this does need to be resolved. This does need to be finished. Whether it's the firemen, whether it's policemen, whether it's city employees, whatever, these things that have been laying dormant are costing the taxpayers money daily. So, again, I, we didn't find, I'm sorry, I didn't find out just an hour ago. We found out the other day, once the, again, the agenda was released. So, the delay, the prospect of a delay, to me, and I'm not saying it's not a lot of money, is not prudent, in my opinion. And as Councilman Lahat said, this has been dragging on for a long, long time. So, I'm in favor of this, and I think it's something we need to act on today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Councilmember McKenna?
Thank you, Council President. I'm just going to echo those comments. I believe that this is something that the firefighters have been, you know, trying to resolve for a very, very long time. I think that it needs to be resolved today. The council was saying that they're trying to have an expedited meeting, so the meeting on April 13th is probably not the meeting that they're going to have to discuss that. They may hopefully meet before that. I mean, that could be the assumption as well, right?
It is.
Yes. So, if we would delay, you know, if we would delay this, you know, that could lead to, you know, more delays. And if we're going to be obligated to pay this in July, it's a lot of money, but it is amortized over 30 years. And it's something that needs to get done. It's something, a right that needs to be corrected from the past. And, you know, I think that as council members, we have, we have decisions that every day that we have to make, and with large amounts of money sometimes, small amounts of money. But we have to make those decisions expeditiously, right? We can't wait overnight to see how we feel about some things. So, this is something that's been a long time coming. It's the right thing to do, and we just need to act on it today, rather than wait. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenna. Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, I do agree with it, because again, it's going to take, you're going to actually pay more money to, from what I'm understanding of it, if we delay this vote. So, to me, that doesn't make any sense. And again, this has been going on, I've heard about it. So, I'm in agreeance that we should go ahead and vote on this, because these are things that we are inheriting. This is nothing that we created just since we've been on this board. These are things that have been out there for a minute.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. I have to say that I'm in favor of getting this settlement done, and I commend the administration and Mayor Glazer for taking the bull by the horns and getting these things taken care of. You have no idea how many things are dumped into our laps from the prior years. And it's a situation where the numbers aren't going to change whether you think about it for two weeks or not. I mean, in reality, we owe this money. It's, if you listen to the attorney, he just told us, we owe the money, we have to pay the money. It's not going to change anything in the next two weeks. It's not going to go away. Taking the bull by the horns and making these tough decisions are the jobs of the council to vote on things like this. And I feel that by delaying anything, it could add more money to the cost of the settlement, and I don't want that to happen. Like, the administration, thank you for bringing these things up and trying to get this stuff settled. It's been kicked down the road since basically 2007, 2008. I mean, you just can't keep kicking this down the road. This, I knew about this issue when I first got elected in 2018, in that first term. This came up during that term, that we have this problem out there. Nothing was ever discussed on it by the prior administration. So, we need to get this thing taken care of.
Councilmember Wilmot?
I agree with Councilman Branigan, and I thank the administration too, because these are tough issues, and they are tackling them. And I truly appreciate that, because it doesn't need to be kicked down the road. It needs to be handled immediately. And again, but I've heard some things that if we voted on this today, and are we voted on it in two weeks, would, you know, would it make any difference? Would we have to pay more money? And I ask that question, if you could respond to that for me.
So, a couple of things. One of which is that there is a value to the City of Kenner approving the settlement today, because then, at the time that the FRS is considering us, they know that this is a done deal, and that the city's on board with it. So, a deferral, the optics of what a deferral could mean, as to whether or not the FRS may reconsider, whether it wants to participate in this settlement, it's just another card that's out there that I would just mention to the council in connection with its decision today. Technically, the amount of money would not be raised in the event that there was a deferral, unless the deferral warranted a position that the settlement would not be approved, in which case, we would be back in court, and we would back be litigating, and the interest would continue to accrue. So, we, this matter had been set for trial. The matter was resolved to the satisfaction of the respective parties, and approved by the judge in court, and put on the record in court, and that the settlement was subject to this council's approval as well as FRS board. And the sooner that we can put the issues to bed, the sooner that the releases can be provided, and the sooner the firefighters can have their benefits recalculated and paid.
Mr. Watson?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that, and I just wanted to make one more comment. I am working on legislation at present, and I'm hoping to address these issues, so the council will have rules in place in the future. So, it would be more, how do you say, transparent and public awareness. So, that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Mr. Watson, the judge that we have, I am assuming that that judge wants this thing handled as fast as possible.
There's no doubt, I would say that that would be the standard of any judge, would prefer to have the matter done as expeditiously as possible. And she certainly was very happy that this matter got resolved, because what it did is it thwarted, you know, not only the time and resources of the court to adjudicate this matter, but also the time burden associated with any continued appellate action that might be taken in the event that either party decided to challenge the district court's ruling in the case. So, the fact that the parties were able to come to an agreement to settle and resolve this case, as expeditious as it did, warranted the judge's approval of the matter, and she requested that the parties enter into the settlement in the court record, which then would allow us to present the matter to you, as well as to the board of FRS. So, I would reiterate that both from outside legal counsel's perspective, as well as the administration, the sooner that we can send the message to not only the FRS, but to the bond commission, that the City of Kenner is emphatically in favor of resolving this matter in favor of not only its own constituents, but specifically to the firefighters, the better position we will be to ensure that all parties are in agreement to be bound by the provisions that we've agreed to.
Thank you. And Mr. Power, we are following the process that's in place now, and I want the public to know that this is a large lawsuit and settlement, and we're not trying to hide anything from anyone, or we wouldn't be talking about it.
Mr. President, I'd like to...
Anyone else?
No.
Mr. Brown, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Richard Brown, 824 Sessions, Layton, in Kenner. Two things. Initially, we're simply going to ask that the terms of the settlement be made public, because nothing on the council agenda or in the attachments, if you clicked on the link to look at the attachments, nothing spelled out the terms of the settlement. I think the public is entitled to know something like this, and I'm glad that Mr. Wilmot brought it up, and that the amount of the settlement is being disclosed. So, that's point number one. That was originally why I came up. But a second point I want to make is on the issue of the deferment, and I've changed my position on this somewhat, just standing here listening. I do believe this should be deferred. First off, I'm not sure that approving this complies with the open meetings law. Nothing on the agenda indicates this was to be voted on today. There just was to be a discussion, an executive session. I question whether this complies with the open meetings law in terms of notifying the public as to what actions ought to come before the council. Second, regardless of whether it violates the open meetings law, and I really do think it might, I think it is simply good policy and transparency that the public and the council know about these things more than a few minutes or a few days before it happens. And Mr. Brennan made the statement, you know, he actually called somebody to find out more information. And that's good, I'm glad he did. But the council members should not have to do that. You know, the agenda itself should apprise the council members of what it's all about, and should apprise the public of what it's all about. I do think it's a better policy that these things be on the record, that the amount be disclosed prior to the council voting on it. And I look forward to whatever legislation Mr. Wilmot might come up with. Thank you. Unless somebody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And by the way, I'm president of Citizens for Better Kenner, but I'm speaking that this is on my behalf. This is something we have not discussed as a group, because it just now came up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
George?
George? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Louis Robeen, R-O-B-E-I-N. I'm counsel for Kenner Firefighters Association and the named plaintiffs. Just to address some of the legal issues that were addressed, excuse me, our special counsel, as well as the city attorney. This matter has been going on for a long time. There's reported Supreme Court decisions, reported decisions of the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. No offense to my colleagues in the city of New Orleans. This is very much akin to the longevity and annual leave class action matter that was resolved in the city of New Orleans in 2016, after minimally 20 years of litigation and settlement discussions. You've done very well in terms of processing this case. The City of Kenner and the prior administrations has made partial efforts to resolve the undisputed obligations and liabilities, and this is the final. And this was not, by the way, has not been brought on by the individual claimants or the unions' demand for pension contributions on so-called earnable compensation. This is a requirement on the state constitution, an actuarial requirement, that we've all inherited. But in terms of expedition, it is critically important that this matter be approved, not only in the eyes of the court, but in the eyes of the FRS, because the firefighters' retirement system, they've already commenced. Trust me, we've made sure they've commenced the process of individualizing calculations for the 60-plus individuals that have retired, excuse me, 30-plus individuals that have retired, and an additional amount of those that have entered the so-called notional retirement to drop. We have to recalculate those numbers, and they're entitled to quote-unquote "back pay," and they're entitled to future adjustment. Now, because as counsel pointed out, each day brings on additional liability in terms of interest and other delay-related accruals. We've got to get this done now. And that's the message that's been forwarded to FRS, and I trust that FRS will have a special call meeting before April 13th, their regularly scheduled meeting. I mean, we're on this, and we'll be there to make sure that they do the right thing. We've got to bring an end to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Glazer?
I have a comment. I don't know if it's not actually on point on this piece of legislation, but about the executive session and the reason it's done to where it is. When we have lawsuits, the council comes, makes a presentation, puts a value on what they think if we're in a bad spot. And they seek authority up to a certain number. Council approves, nobody knows the number but the council and the administration and the city attorney's office, because you're still in negotiations. If we come in here and say we're going to, y'all approve settlement up to $10 million, and it's only worth $5 million, the council that's suing us are going to say, okay, we'll take the $10 million and run. That's why none of these numbers are put out, because they're seeking settlement authority up to a certain number. This is a little unique, because these facts are specific. Through state statute, what the firemen were, should have been paid for the four categories through there. There's 92 plaintiffs in this case, pretty much all retired, and the ones that are in the the drop, so those specifics won't change. But the executive session is seeking a settlement authority up to a certain number that we don't want opposing council to know. So, you given that, our attorneys, you can go up to this much and that's it. So, I didn't know if I was off point with that, but that's the way executive session, everybody has it, every government has it, all the way, local, parish, state, federal, all have the same thing that you don't know what these attorneys are negotiating behind closed doors until an agreement's made. So, when y'all come back after executive session and vote, it's up to a settlement authority up to a certain number. And y'all that have been in it a long time know that's exactly what they asked for, settlement authority up to a certain number. And then I did just to, if I've already talked off topic too much, I did ask the question, how many more of these do we have, you know, in the City of Kenner? And I was told two or three but nowhere near to the magnitude of this, you know. So, but we slowly working through them and trying to get them paid off so we can move on to new business. That's it for me, buddy.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer. The gifts that keep on giving. Mr. Morella.
Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 51 years. Somebody wants to talk, man? I'll yield the floor.
Go ahead, Mr. Morella, please.
Okay. First of all, let me just say this. I agree with Mr. Brown, they should have been a little bit more specifics on the agenda concerning this. However, the executive session is provided for under the state's open meetings laws. This body can call an executive session anytime during the meeting, but I do agree it should be a little more specific. What is the cause of this? We should go look at what the cause, what caused all of this to happen, okay? First of all, our first responders should never be put in a position like this. They should never be have a pension fund or any fund concerning them short change. This is what happens. For years, I've been saying that the fire chief should be in elected position, not serve at the pleasure of the administration. Who's to say this is not going to happen again? You don't see this going on with the police department and why? Because the police chief was elected by the people, that's why. He has the answer to the voters. This chief answers to the administration. Then, we talking for administration, man, since 1999. We talking various different council members that occupy those seats up there. Different councils change altogether. Another reason is, this is what happens when you've got people occupying positions down here that go along to get along. And I agree with Councilman Brannigan, we should know these figures, nothing should be hidden from the public. We got 1.2 million last settlement, last meeting, 3 million this meeting, when is this all in? When these bodies start serving the best interest of the people instead of their own. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Well, Mr. Morella, as Mayor Glazer just said, we have two or three more of these and hopefully that's it. So, that's when it'll all end. I hope that you can see that this administration and this council, all of us are working together to get the problems from the past resolved because there's a lot of street panels we can fix with 3.8 or 2.8 or whatever the damn number's going to be.
At this rate, Councilman Brannigan, if our city, if our city don't end, the existence of our city don't end first. Thank you.
Councilmember Brennan.
I'm good, thank you, Councilchair.
Councilclerk.
Yes, sir. We are on the motion to settle. Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. I have Councilman Schwarth announced he will be abstaining and Councilman Wilmot announced he will be abstaining. So, all of the council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Councilmember Wilmot and Schwarth abstaining. Do we have any resolutions, motions or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of March 2nd, 2023. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Kenner Italian Heritage Incorporated on April 21st and April 22nd, 2023 in Rivertown, 300 through 700 blocks of Rivertown Boulevard being property owned by the City of Kenner. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2316-23, Driftwood Park Civic Association to hold a public gathering on April 22nd, 2023 from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of an annual family festival and fun run at Goliathus Playground. Item 3B is application number 2321-23, Kenner Italian Heritage Incorporated to hold a public gathering on April 21st, 2023 from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. and April 22nd, 2023 from noon to 10:00 p.m. for the purpose of a festival in Rivertown. Item 3C is application number 2322-23, New Orleans Running Systems Road Race Management to hold a public gathering on April 15th, 2023 from 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for the purpose of a 5K fundraiser at Laketown. Item 3D is application number 2323-23, City of Kenner to hold a public gathering on May 6th, 13th, 20th, 27th of 2023 from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the purpose of Movies in the Park Series 2023 at Heritage Park. Item 3E is application number 2324-23, the City of Kenner to hold a public gathering on May 5th, 12th, 19th and 26th of 2023 from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. for the purpose of Music in the Park Series 2023 at Heritage Park. Item 3F is application 2325-23, First Baptist Church of Kenner to hold a public gathering on April 1st, 2023 from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of the Easter picnic at 1313 Clay Street. Item 3G is application number 2320-23, Williams Boulevard Baptist Church to hold a public gathering on April 2nd, 2023 from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of a community Easter egg hunt event at 3,000 Williams Boulevard. Item 3H is application number 2326-23, Our Lady of Perpetual Health Catholic Church to hold a public gathering on April 9th, 2023 from 6:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. for the purpose of an Easter sunrise mass at La Salle's Landing, Williams Boulevard and 3rd Street, Kenner, Louisiana, being property owned by the City of Kenner. Item 3I is application number 2327-23, Custom Cruisers to hold a public gathering on March 25th, April 22nd, May 27th, June 24th, July 22nd, August 26th, September 23rd and October 28th of 2023 from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of a car cruise night at the Esplanade Mall, 1401 West Esplanade Avenue, Kenner, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot to approve the consent agenda. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item eight, under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings for final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,179, an ordinance amending special ordinance number 7746 adopted June 19th, 1997, which approved the commercial development with certain restrictions on Lot Y-1-B-2, Chateau Estates subdivision to allow Wingstop to operate a restaurant and place a dumpster both less than 150 feet from the southern lot line of Lot Y-1-B-2, Chateau Estates subdivision, Kenner-Jeffson Parish, Louisiana.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to open the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0.
All right. We have a presentation.
Yes, we do. We're just getting it hooked up right now. Give me one second. All right, is it? All right, is it ready? Okay, I believe, can y'all see that? No?
We need to put it in.
Is it good now? Okay. Thank you. The applicant or the owner of the property in this case is Chateau Commons LLC, 3636 South Sherwood Forest Boulevard, Suite 440 Baton Rouge, Louisiana. The applicant is Mr. Steve Colber on behalf of Amit Patel, who does business as Wingstop, 828 Davis Street, Suite 3,000, Evanston, Illinois. The subject property is bound by West Esplanade Avenue on the north, Mayfair Lane on the south, Chateau Boulevard on the east and Napolino on the west. And the site is currently developed at the Chateau Commons Shopping Center. The subject site is zoned, special ordinance 7746, which was adopted June 19th, 1997, which approved a retail commercial shopping center on Lot Y-1-B-2 with certain restrictions. The applicant conducted an early neighborhood meeting on October 20th, 2022. They sent out approximately 47 letters and they reported that four people were, attended the meeting, including two neighbors. The two neighbors who attended were not in support. Wingstop attempted to address some of their concerns and that they responded to their concerns, that they are sensitive to the neighbors' concerns, but feel that since they offer mostly takeout and delivery, they will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood. So, in terms of the planning unit development, the applicant is asking to amend special ordinance 7746 to allow the Wingstop to operate in that building and to place a dumpster in the existing dumpster corral, which is located to the west of the site of the building, both within 150 feet of Lot Y-1-B-2. This is required because that particular special ordinance does not permit restaurants or dumpsters in that particular building within 150 feet of the rear property line. Wingstop, most of you know, is a national corporation. The planning department reviewed the proposal and Wingstop is proposing to meet, you know, place a dumpster that will meet all the city's requirements and to make sure that it's covered and all the trash is picked up, et cetera. The planning commission, when they met and held the public hearing, they could not reach consensus. There was a motion made by a planning commission member to approve with certain provisos that address some of the concerns that were brought up at the planning commission meeting, including the trash and the lighting. There was an issue with the lighting. However, that motion did not pass. It was a three-to-three vote and so the planning commission did not make a recommendation. So, that concludes the planning department's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dufour. Is there anyone on the council, in the audience wishing to speak on this legislation? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I'm waiting for you, please.
I'm not starting the clock till you get there.
I'll break it. Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 51 years. All I have to say on this issue, follow the law and listen to what the people have to say. And I can tell you something, I oppose it. I'm totally opposed to this. And one more thing I'd like to ask. Is this the property we talking about that's across the street from the Chateau Country Club?
No.
The Chateau Estates? Okay, that's a different area.
It's next to Walgreens.
One more question. This guy Patel, because I recall not long ago that the person who owned that property across from the Chateau Country Club, I'm not sure if this is the same one.
No.
It's not? Okay. But I understand he was a relative of a former governor of the state of Louisiana. Is he related to anybody in Baton Rouge? Does anybody know? Okay. All right, I just figured I'd ask these questions.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this legislation.
Yes, it does. Because, yes, it does, if there's any kind of connection here anywhere. Anyway, that's all I have. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name's Robert Westonfeld. I live at 744 Mayfair Lane. I have been there since March of 79. I was part of this original PUD and the purpose of the PUD was to protect the quality of life for the citizens who live behind that development. Until just recently, our life was peaceful and quiet. Since the council chose to alter it the first time and to being asked to alter it again, it is not going to improve our quality of life. Since the Five Guys went in, we have constant traffic, service vehicles anytime of the day or night, the Sapphire Door, which is now a through avenue, they have deliveries all the time, people sit in the back, they smoke cigarettes, they talk on the phone. We hear all this, we get the smell from the Five Guys, which we didn't want, and we're afraid if we get to Wingstop, we're going to have even a bigger smell. So, I have to ask the question, everybody talks about these Fortune 500 companies and the revenue, but what's more important to the council, revenue or the quality of life for their citizens?
You have three minutes to finish your talk.
I'm finished. Any questions? Thank you.
No. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, so this is a.
Mr. Chairman, let's close your hearing real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to close the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 7-0 to close your hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember to approve, but I'd like to say something about it before we go to vote. Councilmember McKenney.
Thank you, Council President. Director Dufour, I just have a question. I know you said that the planning commission did have a public hearing and they didn't make a recommendation. What were their concern, what was the amendment that to? You don't have to.
No, no, there was a motion made by one of the members to approve, recommend approval to the council with provisos that related to the upkeep of the property in the rear, which has been a long-term concern. It was a concern when the Five Guys came through as well. There was also an issue with one of the lights that are, that is positioned towards the rear of the lot to the east of where the Five Guys is, shining into one of the neighbors' backyards. And I believe subsequent to that meeting, the council and Brannigan has addressed those two issues with the property owner and with the lighting so that it doesn't shine and that a filter will be put up to block it from shining into the neighborhood. We have codes in the city that do address bleed from light from commercial development into residential and it's not supposed to bleed out from the development site and it should be directed downwards and it should have been like that when it was built. I don't remember the third one, but it had to do, I think, loitering possibly behind the building. There was some concerns brought up about people hanging out. I know some of the issues are related to the Walgreens. There has been some problems with the Walgreens and trash and stuff, but, you know, those were the three main items and then that motion did not pass.
There was no consensus on that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. But those don't seem like issues specific to Wingstop though, because those seem like those are extenuating circumstances, that obviously Wingstop's not there, so they couldn't necessarily.
Well, no, that's, obviously Wingstop is not operating.
Right.
So, issues would not be specific to Wingstop, but I think they were addressed with the idea that the Wingstop, you know, they were brought up because they thought Wingstop would exacerbate some of those problems.
Right.
But, you know, the planning department did recommend to the planning commission that it be approved. We looked at it and, you know, that area is a commercial area. There's, it's very, very, it's well-developed, but there's a lot of PUDs. And so, as an example, the Wingstop itself would be permitted even in our most restrictive commercial zoning district, the C1, because it doesn't have a drive-through component. So, that would be permitted if it was owned C1 or C2.
Okay, great. And just comparing to other PUDs that have restaurants and that are similar, that may, obviously I don't think we have any other wing restaurants in the area, I'm not really sure. But other PUDs, do they have similar restrictions and that they have to abide by?
I have, well, I have not seen a PUD that restricted a generic, specific businesses. They restrict, they. They restrict, they will restrict specific uses. So this particular PUD does not allow bars, service stations, and there are several PUDs around the city with similar restrictions. But it is a specific ordinance directed just at that property. So when the PUD is adopted at any point, it addresses whatever the particular applicant in the city determines are important to be addressed.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenney.
Yeah.
Councilman Dunn?
Yeah, I just have something for Mr. Dufour. Did your office approve this?
Well, we don't, well, we don't approve it, but we looked at it closely, and, you know, when the Five Guys was permitted, there was a lot of opposition, and the planning commission actually voted to recommend denial on the Five Guys, but we have not gotten any pushback or feedback since Five Guys opened in the planning department. And so I, I don't believe that there's been other issues. I feel pretty certain that had there been issues brought up either to us, or to the councilmen, or to the code enforcement department, we would have heard about that, because it was part of a PUD, so it came through the planning department.
Thanks, thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Anyone else? Okay, this is a District Four issue, and I, by putting Wingstop in this location, it's not to have a negative impact on the neighborhood, obviously. When I ran for election in 2018, my platform was pro-business and bringing as much business to the city of Kenner that we can bring here. Having Five Guys in that location, I felt was a no-brainer, because basically, if we go and tell a Fortune 500 company, or a worldwide company, that we don't want them, what kind of messages that send to the, to the, you know, Kenner being open for business? In 2019, I ran an ad in the Kenner Star, asking people to shop in Kenner, and the responses I got back from that ad through email and text messages and things was, we don't have a lot of places to shop in Kenner, so we're addressing these concerns. Basically, the, the issues that these individuals that live on Mayfair have sent to me were trash, okay? And they complained about trash before Five Guys was there. The trash was there before because the property owner was not taking care of the property. I have been in contact with that property owner, and I check it at least once a week to make sure it's clean behind that, that building. A fence has been put up in the little drive-through, Walgreens' drive-through, that separates the property line from Walgreens to where this location would be. This morning, passed by there, there's not a piece of paper back there. Grass is cut, everything's clean. When the lights became an issue, Five Guys put a light over the back door. I went back there, saw the lights shining into these people's backyards. The one that's on the side of the building that illuminates the dumpster that Five Guys put in, beautiful light, lights up the whole place, which is nice, so we don't have people just walking around, but it also reflected into the backyards. So, right now, the answer is that they are turning those lights off so that it doesn't have an impact, a negative impact, on the homes behind them, and I have asked them to put up some type of deflector, the one over the door, you put a deflector over it, so it lights up the door, and does not go back into the, into the backyards, and they have agreed that they will be doing that. The dumpster situation. The dumpster for the, for the Wingstop is going in an existing bin that's been there, I don't know how long it's been there, but there are two dumpsters, bins, one next to Reginaldi's that goes north-south, and one next to the Agua Jew Shop that goes east-west. It's already built, they're already there, that's where their dumpster's going to go. And they're not building another dumpster location to have trash all over the place. So I have taken an active role in making sure this property stays clean behind the, the building, so that the trash is not all over the place, but let me tell you, when we get a north wind, you're going to have trash in that parking lot. I was in there last week, a guy drops a Popeye's bag out the window of a car. I don't know why they think they have maid service that we need to go pick that up, or the property owner needs to pick it up, put it in a garbage can. We can't control that. I'm asking for my colleagues to vote with me approving this, because I think it's a benefit to the city of Kenner. Seventy-one percent of our general fund is driven by sales tax revenue, and I think that the business that I have brought to District Four have contributed in a positive way to the city of Kenner in the last five years. So I'm asking my colleagues to support me on this and bring this in. I am very active in making sure that when a constituent has a problem, the problem gets resolved. I also have talked to the administration about this, and they like that I bring business to District Four. So I'm asking for support on this. I think it's a good, a really good fit, right next to Five Guys, and again, trying to fill up all of these holes that we have in Kenner, because it's a plus for our city. And I have gotten a lot of people that have, you know, commented, and are happy they are that, one, Five Guys is there and Wingstop is coming. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember McKenney, to approve. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven-zero. Item nine is ordinances for sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item ten is opening of bids. We have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. Item twelve A is summary ordinance number 13,189, and ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Kenner Code of Ordinances to revise the definition of minor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Lahat. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say nope. Seeing none, what, Councilmember Wilmore?
If somebody from the administration, I presume this is who it's filed by, if they can give an explanation?
Yeah, I'll cover that. Basically, recently, the legislature lowered the, the age, the definition of a minor to include seventeen-year-olds as minors. All the ordinances that we deal with for enforcement of crimes committed by juveniles, as well as parental responsibility defines a minor as up to the age of seventeen. So there's, the seventeen-year-old is not defined in our ordinances as a juvenile or a minor, but it is by state law. So this amendment, just for housekeeping purposes, cleans that up, and instead of putting an age in there in case legislature changes, goes back and forth, we're just referring to the state children's code with a legislative act that defines a minor or juvenile, so that we never have to do this again. But right now, we're dealing with seventeen-year-olds out on the street and for curfew violations, and we, and parental responsibility for parents who are not responsible, have seventeen-years out there after curfew, we have to have a way to enforce our ordinances, and this will allow us to do it.
Thank you for that explanation. Great, good catch. That needs to be done, and in that way, it just, we don't have to do anything with it in the future, it just follows the state law, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else? All right. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven-zero. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. We have none. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number 13,175, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 11,698, and approving amendment number one to the agreement between the city of Kenner and Romelli Janitorial Service Incorporated for garbage collection and recycling services.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Lahat.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, we have a motion to switch out the backup documents. I believe everybody's received a copy of the new backup document for this item that's on the agenda, it was sent out to the whole agenda distribution group, in fact, so everyone should have received it. Would you like to entertain that motion and second now?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to change out the backup document to what was distributed by the clerk.
Is there any discussion on the backup documents? Or you?
No, I'm here, I'm here to talk on the audience.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Lahat, to approve the amendment?
Yes.
Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven-zero. So you're back to your original motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Lahat. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 50th District, 51 years. I want to say this, I fully expect and demand our Romelli Janitorial Services 100% -- this is fifteen A, we all right? Gossman, okay?
Yes.
I expect and demand 100% compliance with this contract. Anything less is totally unacceptable.
I got it.
And I expect, if it is anything less, for Romelli to be hit with the stiffest penalties that we can hit them with, that's provided to us in this contract. Now, I want to send a message to these solid waste collectors, just because you contribute campaign, you make campaign contributions, and you think, you entite, you got connections, that we at your mercy? No, we not at your mercy. You gonna do, you gonna provide the services that you agreed to, to the citizens of this city, and if no one down here will hold you accountable, we ought. And one more thing, Ms. Newton gave a little presentation a little earlier on, on the recyclables, but I'd like to know what the percentage of the people in this city, of the households, want recyclables and those that don't want it. I, for one, don't want it, and do not get them to drop no can by my house, because I don't recycle. Not now, not ever. But I'd like to know what the demand is in this city by the citizens for this service, because whether you getting it or not, you paying for it. Ms. Newton, could you answer that for me? Thank you.
Mr. Morella, I can tell you, 3260 East Loyola Drive, is that correct?
What's that?
Your address, 3260 East Loyola Drive?
4260 East Loyola.
Forty-two sixty, thank you. I'll make a note of that and ask that no recycle bins be placed at your home.
Okay. Now, one more thing, Ms. Newton, could you answer this for me? What is the demand, what is the percentage of the households in this city who want recycling as opposed to those who don't?
From rough estimates, we have about a thirty-two cent, thirty-two percent participation rate.
Thank you. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
And we hope that thirty-two percent goes up.
Thank you.
That's why you had that thirty-two sixty.
I guess so. But we're happy to provide choices for our residents.
That's it. Mr. Teft?
Great, Teft, 3720 West Loyola Drive. I've got a few comments I want to make, but first of all, I want to just say this. On January 24th, a letter was sent to the city that basically offered the same amount of money, the same terms for IV waste, and why the, why the city has taken the position to bring somebody else on board for the same thing, I don't understand, and I would like that answered. I also want to say that there's, the communications from this administration has been deplorable. One minute we're getting the bin, next minute we're not, now we're going to be paying for the bins. Now, I don't know how we're going to pay for them, because we've got streets that need to be worked on, but we're going to spend all this money on bins and give it to a contractor, where the original contract stipulated that they furnished the bins, which is what IV waste has done. IV waste furnished the bins. Now, all of a sudden, the city's going to be furnishing the bin, which is the taxpayers paying for it. The other question I, and the other thing I have, if IV waste is being overpaid, there are remedies that could be addressed to take care of that overpayment, because most of the recycling is based on households according to the contract. I believe right now, twenty-two thousand households is being charged a, the fee for the recycling, while only seven thousand are actually recycling. That's the way the contract, I believe, originally was made. How do you overpay? And what is that amount that, that is in dispute? Nothing has ever been said about the amount in dispute and why it's in dispute. The other thing I comment is that there is a count, again, as I just pointed out. We know how many bins that IV waste has for recycling, and how many bins that are out there for waste pickup. That's a pretty easy, simple math issue that can be resolved pretty quickly. If I know I've got this many bins, I know that's how much I'm going to be paying. But again, the contract says twenty-two thousand are going to, twenty-two thousand people are going to still pay for recycling, whether they recycle or not. Then there were numerous articles about Romelli not actually taking the recycling in, to the recycle place. Did we forget about that? And then I'm going to bring up the most important thing. Now, the new council members may not have heard anything, or to them, everything was all honky-dory, but four of you that voted for the IV waste to come on board, you had so many complaints from your constituents, and I know forty percent was in District Five alone, of people that complained about the service that was being provided by Romelli.
Mr. Teft, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Mayor Glazer?
Yeah, I'll answer a couple of questions. The letter from February 24th that you referred to does not exist. The letter that was sent to us states, IV waste is stopping garbage services March 1st. That's what it says. We have twenty, the contract says twenty-two thousand households. IV waste is well over twenty-three thousand households billing now, but the contract calls for twenty-two. That's the dispute we have, just on recycling. The overbilling now is at least $2.5 million is the overbilling. We've met with them over a half a dozen times, trying to get them to reel in the, the overbilling. So the February 24th letter said they're stopping garbage services in the city of Kenner unless we pay the overbilling, which we not paying the overbilling. So what's the next thing we do? We have a company under contract already that's not being utilized for the supplemental services, which is Romelli. So I met with the representatives, representatives from Romelli, asking them, can they pick up the supplemental services, that's the drop site and the recycling, for their contracted amount, and they said they could do it. We knew that, they said they're going to put something out on March 1st. I could be the most optimistic person in the world, we know you're not getting seven thousand recycling bins out March 1st. It's impossible. So the $2.5 million reasons that we have for suspending IV waste, I can, like I said before, I can care less who picks up garbage in the city of Kenner, but there's not a contractor going to steal this much money from the residents of Kenner. If you support good government, you should be up there praising all of these people in the city attorney's office that have spent months going through these, these, these bills. So when you go back and get your information on the February 24th letter, you'll find out what it says, and then it's going to take you down another rabbit hole, and you find out the letters that came after that. How we got to this today.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer.
And this piece of legislation just cleans up the, the Romelli CPI, it's, the contract, the CPI was never put in for the supplemental services, and it's $2,010 a house, at twenty-two thousand units.
Not twenty-three.
Not twenty-three something, whatever it is today.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer. Ms. Dufresne?
Yes, there was a January 24th letter that came in, is sort of a settlement-type letter, and it offered to- letter, and it offered to adjust some of the payments, do away with the overpayments that we've been making, the overbilling that we were making. However, it still required us to agree to overpay for the drop site billing at twenty-six thousand dollars a month. And as of Jan, July first, it would go up to twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. So, again, we would have to, we could keep everything the same, and he would continue to operate, but we would have to agree to still overpay for the drop site. And as everyone knows, the drop site and the recycling fee is one fee. There's no extra fees, there's no additional amounts, there's no hauling fees, however, we were paying that. So that's why, when we got to the final number, and all the other overpayments were agreed to be stopped, overcharges agreed to be stopped, we got to a final number, and we just couldn't, we couldn't agree to overpay anymore. We could not agree to let this continue on. And that's, that's, that's the letter Mr. Teft is talking about. And we responded back with, no, we can't, we can't, you're still overcharging, we can't do it, it's outside the terms of the contract, and that's where we left off. So that's the letter Mr. Teft is talking about.
Ms. Dufresne, do we have, do we know how much we saving? I mean, there's numbers flying all over the place, uh, monthly savings or an annual savings, or?
Um, yes.
Can you, can you say that, or can, I mean?
No, I can't, I mean, that's, it's, I mean, I can tell you, um, the, the amounts, here's what I can tell you. Romelli is charging us two dollars and ten cents times twenty-two thousand household, which is forty-six thousand, one hundred, eight hundred, for the drop site and for recycling. Combined, that's it. They, they're doing both. That is, we're going to get one invoice, that's it. We were getting from IV Waste, we were getting an invoice for the drop site at forty-eight thousand, for two dollars and ten cents times twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen households. We were getting an invoice for the recycling, two dollars and ten cents times twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen, which is another, what, forty-eight thousand? We were getting monthly billing for three hundred and fifty dollars a container, to take containers out of the drop site, which was averaging, they slowed down a lot because we cut back to weekends, so that was averaging about thirty-five thousand a month. They were also charging us three hundred and fifty dollars a container to haul out the recycling. That was averaging six or seven thousand a month, depending on how many containers they said they were pulling out. So that right there tells you what we're saving just on the supplementary services. Now, I have invoices that were before for, uh, drop site and recycling totaling forty, fifty, sixty thousand a month, when again, we should have paid one fee, and that's why we stopped. So that's what we're saving. The forty-eight, the second supplementary service fee that started on the drop site, started in October, we refused to pay it. When that bill came in, I would not pay it. I said, we're not paying a second supplementary service fee. It doesn't, it's not in the contract, we're not paying it. So, right now, we owe, according to their latest bill in February, we owe them two hundred and ninety thousand, I think nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and some change for this new second supplementary service fee, for the drop site. And clearly, we're not paying it.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Dufresne. Okay, uh, Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want some, uh, I guess on the record, IV and Romelli, they have different, um, processes, how they handle their recycling. Would you, would you mind commenting on that? Like, what does, what does IV do for its recycling, and then what does, what does Romelli do, how they handle it, after it leaves the, the residence and so forth?
So, what, um, IV Waste was doing, of course, and, and I wasn't here, but going back through emails and, and reconfiguring the, the circumstances, at some point, they lost their ability to recycle locally, so they needed to take their recycling to Baton Rouge. So, they decided to build that fenced-in container section over at the drop site. So they would pick up everyone's recycling, take it over there, dump it in that little, that section, that sealed-off section, and then at some point in time, I guess when they thought they had enough, they would come in and separate it by determining, by looking at it, I guess, saying, oh, this part's contaminated and this part's not. So they would divide up the big piles, and they would take part of it to River Birch and call it contaminated, and they would take part of it to Baton Rouge, to the recycling plant. And it pretty much was, I'd say fifty-fifty mostly every month, half of it was contaminated, half of it wasn't. Now, keep in mind, River Birch is closer, Baton Rouge is further away. So, that's, um, how they handled their recycling. Now, Romelli has a recycling place, and I think some of you all went and visited it. It is in, um, Harrahams. They have their own recycling facility. So now they pick it up, it does not go anywhere on, on drop site property, it goes straight to the recycling plant.
And they use conveyor belts to sort?
I haven't seen that, but I've heard it's a pretty impressive situation. They actually sort, so as far as walking in and saying, hey, this big pile of, of recycling is contaminated, no, it goes to the plant and it's determined whether it's contaminated or not by, by the separation.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Dufresne, just kind of elaborate here, you're saying like maybe fifty-fifty was contaminated, that according to IV? Well, when I visited the site last week, the owner specifically said, Kenner has about three percent contamination, New Orleans seventeen percent. That says volumes for the city of Kenner and the residents that do recycle. And for IV to come up and say, half of it was contaminated, and then go around, put it in the bin, in a roll-off, and then charge the city again for taking it to River Birch. So we're now only getting charged to pick it up the first time, then we get charged again to take it to the dump.
Correct.
So I don't.
And keep in mind, the contract, the contract says when they pick up the, the recycling, it's theirs.
Correct. So, everybody's complaining about this, and I'm saying like, hey, let's, let's think about this.
It's a lot of money.
George? After they finish, I just need to, I want to make a comment about the bins.
Thank you, Council Chair. I was going to ask to speak a, after we voted on this, but I, I, I feel like I, I'd like to make some comments at this point, obviously. We did, there, there were several of us that voted for IV after we toured it, and yes, we did get tons of calls regarding Romelli. But, when, when we were elected and put in the office or re-elected, Mayor Glazer, when he ran, spoke about returning the city to fiscal responsibility. It wasn't just a slogan, it wasn't just a line, and when the man was sworn in, he has done just that. He and his administration have scoured all kinds of things. The fire department issue we voted on just a few minutes ago, that can's been kicked down the road, and I guess I could say trash can since we talked, but no. This has nipped that in the bud, and that is what we should be doing, protecting citizens' dollars. Immediately, it was identified that we were being overbilled and overcharged for services. The administration started meeting with IV back in July, right after they were put in office, to try to work this out, to try to iron it out, to try to stop it, to no avail. Ms. Dufresne or Ms., Ms. Herring, pardon me? My understanding is, there were blind invoices submitted on a regular basis that were just paid and were just approved. Can we say who approved those?
I wasn't, I wasn't here at the time, but Liz.
Yes, so the IV Waste contract was a mayor's office contract at the time. Chad Pittfield was the one who was managing that contract and, and working directly with IV Waste, so he was the one signing off on invoices.
And looking back at this, some of these invoices have no support documentation, is that correct?
We didn't, um, get any backup documents until we got here and started asking for it. Um, and, and when we met with IV Waste the first time in July, I had been here like two days, and it was sort of just a meet and greet, they came and talked to us, and then about once a month thereafter, we met with them to talk about different issues and different things, and, and it was probably September when there was a request from him to pay for the drop site, the building of the drop site. And that's, that's pretty much when this administration goes, um, what is he talking about, and what do we do, what do, what do we, what do we do? And I dove into the contract at that point in time, and that's when I realized that we were getting a lot of billing invoices for items that weren't listed in the contract, such as street sweeping. Um, street sweeping, the word's not in the contract, there's no such phrase as street sweeping, and at the point in December, when we said, "Street sweeping stops, we don't, we're not paying it anymore," um, the city has paid four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for street sweeping services, two days, two days of weekend, Saturdays and Sundays. And that's a service we didn't contract for. I don't know how it started, I don't know when it, when it just, somebody decided in July of twenty-twenty to start street sweeping, I don't know who set up the price, I don't know who set up the terms, where he was going to street sweep, how long he was going to street sweep. The city owned a street sweeper. Why are we paying twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a month for a street sweeper that we didn't contract for? That's what the people should be upset about, and that's what upset me.
Thank you. And so to that point, and it, and as far as the, the, the communication, um, the announcements of the bins and the recycling services, been on the city site, it's been on Facebook, and I understand not everybody has a computer, not everybody follows that. I, I think it's interesting to point that when it did get announced, and the announcement of the green bins, the dreaded green bins were going to go to neighborhoods, people started, the, that's, those were the calls I was getting. Not that we were changing service, those were the texts I was getting, that people didn't want the green bins for, the, they break, they're, they blow down the street, they turn over, the stuff goes all over. And immediately, or pretty quickly, the administration came out and said, we're not going to do that, we're going to go ahead and get the, the rolling cans, which many people said they prefer. I understand there's an expense to that, but it also is money being well-spent, because when anything does happen with the contract, it's not going to be, don't touch my can, don't touch their can, don't touch the can, they're our cans, they're the city of Kenner's, they're your cans. So if we do have a problem, we can go from company A to company B, and hopefully, it's uninterrupted. So, again, I commend the administration, because they did. They've, they've, they've uncovered contracts that had expired for emergency services in the event of hurricanes or storms, that were not renewed or followed through with, and those were in place. So there's a whole lot of stuff nobody sees, and they've been digging and digging and digging and finding many things, and this is just another example of it. And it is good government, it is what we were elected to do. So, I, I have to commend them, and I'm sorry, because Sidney Torres and Julie Tofaro were absolutely awesome. You'd send a text, you'd call them, they were, they were very quick to respond. The service was excellent, but the bottom line is, we, in the administration's opinion, have been overcharged greatly, and that should be the reason people are saying, let's give this a look, and let's see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman Brennan, your three minutes was up three minutes ago.
I tell you what, I'll speak in the next four meetings.
Thank you, Council President, um, and thank you, Councilwoman Brennan, for saying almost everything I wanted to say, but, um, anyway.
We should close your notepad when we go into executive session.
No, but I, I will, do want to say, you know, I voted for IV Waste to, to transition, I thought, I thought that was, um, a prudent thing, because we weren't getting complaints. But, but honestly, the issues that we got complaints about, and I personally experienced, didn't have anything to do with recycling. IV Waste did a, I mean, IV Waste, Romelli did a great job with their recycling. I know there was an issue, um, you know, they said that they had thrown them in the garbage, you know, in between. I never, if that, if that ever happened, I never heard anything about that accusation. Um, I'm a recycler, I, my husband hates that I keep like half of our trash and, and put it, you know, in the recycling bin, um, but I think that that is, uh, you know, recycling is a, something that is going to ultimately help. There is a market for it. In my research, I know that there's a lot of issues, and there's a lot of talk about, oh, it used to go to China, and now there's no market for it, so it's not, there, you know, now it's just going to, probably just going to the trash. But that's not true. They, they do have a market for it, like, um, Councilwoman Sworsh is saying, there is, um, three percent of the recycling, uh, previously for Kenner only went to the trash. So, that means ninety-seven percent of the items that went, that go into the recycling, actually get recycled. There are, look, there are, um, regional, national companies, paper companies, um, as well as, um, companies that reused plastics, um, the, you know, plastics one and two, to, to put that back into commerce. This is actually something that's helping, um, take things out of the landfill and make it into another product that is, that they could sell and reuse. This is a, this is a, uh, you know, it's a good service, recycling, I'm not trying to sell on recycling, but I think there, if, as long, you know, my concern was that, oh, well, there, all of our recycling is just going to the trash. I don't believe that. I think that there is definitely a market for it, it has to be by large amounts, um, so that's why I encourage every resident to recycle. If you read, Mr. Morella, if you read a newspaper, you can recycle a newspaper, and all of the newspapers that you read, you should put in the recycling bin so they can be turned into other paper and other newspapers, because that is ultimately going to help keep trash out of the landfills. So, you know, if, if for any reason you're against recycling, I encourage you to, to reconsider that, um, and this, this deal is actually going to save, as, as all my colleagues said, this is going to save, um, money for the city, because we're actually just paying a one-time fee. Um, I, I actually remember when we were talking, I actually talked to Mr. Torres on, about, um, before we were voting for the other contract that said, and I told him, if recycling doesn't work and it's, it's not profitable, then we don't need to recycle anymore. And, you know, his response was, great, obviously, he went in a different direction, um, and so I real, but I really think that if we're going to do it, we need to do it as, you know, as cheaply as possible with service. I mean, I think that, um, that what we do is important, and, uh, and, and taking this out of, of the trash, that's ultimately going to be cheaper for us, because it's not going to the landfills, and everyone, you know, there's a lot of concern about filling up landfills and all that, it's another concern. If you recycling, then it's not going to that landfill, right? So, um, with regard to recycling, I also, I, I did look at some invoices, and I wanted to have some questions, I think you answered a lot of them. But, so, my understanding was that you guys interacted on, um, September and started continuing, meeting monthly with Mr. Torres. In your September billing, you did not receive any, um, any charges for, um, for the roll-off, or for the roll-off site, is that correct?
For, no, we didn't, we didn't receive a second supplementary service fee.
Service, right.
The forty-eight thousand dollar bill for September. The first time we got a drop site supplementary service fee, second fee, was October.
October, okay. And you weren't giving any notice that you were going to get that, that just appeared?
Oh, no, no, it was just in the billing.
Okay.
And I, when I got it, I didn't know what it was.
Okay. And then, like you said, this, this, did you guys authorize the street, street sweeping?
No, no, we actually shut it down.
Okay. Um, and then, so for this Kenner transfer station?
That's, that's actually the, we call it the drop site, for some reason, they call it the transfer station, but it's, it's a drop site.
So that's the drop site?
Yes.
So, um, so, so every time they chart, they moved a ro, a roll-off container, um, which it looks like multiple times a day? which it looks like multiple times a day, they charged $350,000, correct?
Correct.
So like on October 1st, so they almost charged over $3,000, almost $3,000 just to empty trash what was dumped on October 1st, according to this bill.
Yes, that's what it says on, from the drop site, every time,
From the drop site, right.
If you went to the drop site and put your trash in the containers.
So George went there and dumped all his stuff.
Yes, yes.
She's bored, how did you do nine containers full?
The trailer fills up fast.
So, okay, so, I mean, that seems, so we were paying for the amount for the drop site, which was the drop site, and we're paying for the recycling, which was, should have been included in that full?
One fee.
One fee, right, which is $46,000.
Forty, he's charging 48.
48, okay. But we were paying above and beyond that just to move the trash off. So we were basically paying for the employee that maintains it, $46,000 a month.
We were paying every time, and what was the total for that month, October? It's probably about $38,000, $39,000?
Yeah, let's see.
For just the drop site roll-offs?
Yeah, just the drop site roll-offs, just $46,550.
So we paid $48,000 for the supplementary service fee for the drop site and the recycling. And then we paid an additional $46,000 for the roll-offs to be taken away from the drop site. And then we probably paid another fee, which might have been about six or seven, I'm not sure, it's October bill, maybe another six or seven for them to take the roll-offs for recycling. So what, $55,000 for roll-offs?
So that was?
From a site that should have been included in that one fee, correct?
Okay. So that's almost, so we were supposed to be paying 48, and we ended up paying over $100,000 in that one month?
Yes.
Okay. And then they also charged to drop off the recycling as well?
To roll off the recycling.
So, so to roll, okay, so to send the recycling to Baton Rouge, they charged $5,600.
Yes.
So right now, and then right now, the recycling is going to be going from our, my house, not just my house, whatever residents I put up, to the recycling, and we won't get charged for that ever, anything else, just on top of the 46.
We will get one invoice that says supplementary services, it will be $22,000 households, because that's what the contract states, it's $22,000. And it will be $46,100, whatever that is.
Okay, and that's per month?
Per month.
So we're saving roughly at least $60,000 a month?
Just on that, yes.
Just on that, yes.
And then that's not a really heavy month, there was months that that number, going back to 2020, was a lot higher.
Right, okay. And then also, my other question had to do with, you know, that, the January 24th letter?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that you said that you communicated back and forth. But when did, who filed suit, who filed suit first? Or who filed suit first with, when response to that letter? Did Ivy Waste?
Ivy Waste, yes.
Ivy Waste, so Ivy Waste was not happy with your response, and they filed suit as a response?
Yes, basically the response back was, "No, we still cannot agree to overpay. At this time, we can no longer afford to pay the supplementary service fees and drop site fees that you're charging us." It wasn't that we couldn't afford to pay, it's that we couldn't afford to pay what they were billing us any longer. And so that's when we suspended the services with them. And basically, went back to Ivy, I mean to Ramelli, and had them bill us for what we're supposed to be charged. And it's the same terms in the contract, so it's not that Ramelli's contract is different than Ivy's, it's the same. It's the same price. It's just that Ivy Waste was charging extra.
Right, and that contract still stands, obviously, because we didn't terminate that contract or?
Right, it's got three more years, yes.
Okay, I mean, I think that, as George would say, this is a no-brainer, that we need to move towards, you know, getting a service that we know is actually going to happen. I have no ill will towards Ivy Waste, I think they provide excellent service with regard to trash service. And, you know, the residents of Kenner were just trying to do what is best for, in all instance, and, you know, transition. I mean, nobody more than the four of us up here that was, that were on the council for the previous, under the previous administration, the previous trash issues wants to have trash awards too. So we just want to do what's right for the citizens of Kenner and move forward. So I think that this is, you know, a step in the right direction.
We thought this was the best, this administration, and we, you know, we talked about it, we paid under protest for a while because of the overcharges. And hoping that we could get to a resolution, we met repeatedly, we met, you know, brought up our stances, they countered our stances. And when it finally came to the last, the January 24th letter, where it was, "Okay, we'll agree to stop overcharging all these other things as long as you agree to keep paying, agree to overpay for the drop site, $26,000 and then eventually $28,000 a month." And we just, first of all, it's not in the contract, so we couldn't agree to that anyway. And as you all know, everything in the contract, street sweeping, whatever, anything over $100,000, you all would have had to approve. So it was just not possible. So that's when we said, you know, "We can't continue on any longer."
Well, thank you for your diligent, you know, looking at all of this information and recommending the transition. I appreciate the administration's, it's certainly not, it's certainly, you know, it's March of 2023. It's not like you came right in and out with Ivy, in with Ramelli. I mean, it's, you did your due diligence, we're trying to do what's best for the citizens of Kenner. I think some of the stuff that's being said with regard to the administration is very misleading. And, you know, it's just off-base. I think that they're doing what's right for the citizens of Kenner. And being fiscally responsible, so thank you, administration.
What's right is not always easy, but it's always right.
Okay, Ms. McKenney, three minutes added, 15 minutes, ended 15 minutes ago. Mayor Glazer?
I won't take. Mr. Brown, I'm getting to you.
I won't take two minutes. Mr. Taft, I was referring to a February letter in some of my comments, I didn't hear you say January, so I apologize for that. The contract says that the contractor buys the recycling bins. In the contract, it's the 18-gallon open bins. We had some interest in people keeping the rolling but the tops. So the money that Ramelli would be paying for the 18 gallons, he's applied it to the cities doing the upgrade with the wheels that the people want. So we're paying the difference, it's something that, some residents said they liked those, so we're buying some. I think Mr. Richard Brown likes to carry one, I believe, I'm not, I think he does. I'm losing it, but I don't think I've totally lost it yet, but that's it. But that's how, and with the savings of not paying the overbilling, that's where that money came from. Stays in all the same account.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer, Councilmember Wilmond, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this question is for legal. One question is the paperwork for the settlement with Ramelli that we had recently. Has the paperwork been finalized and approved, and it's already done?
Yes, I just got to the motion to dismiss the report, so it's probably solved yesterday afternoon.
Put the paperwork with sign on both parties?
Yes, I believe it's involved.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Brown, you've been standing there for a while, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start over. Richard Brown, 8:24 Sessions, Lainan, Kenner. About all I can do is say that I agree with everything that Mr. Friend just said up here, and the mayor, and the council members. I fully support what the council is proposing to do, or what the mayor has asked. I fully support giving the recycling back to Ramelli. And this is something, by the way, I wrote to all the council members yesterday and set out my thoughts pretty much in that letter. But I have been studying Kenner's garbage situation for years, going back several years prior to 2020. I'm intimately familiar with the Ivy Waste contract right here, intimately familiar with the Ramelli contract right here. I've got a grand, I've got about four or five other contracts with me. There have been three Ivy Waste contracts, and I think two different proposed contracts, several Ramelli contracts, and I think I've got the Waste Management Contract. And I have also studied the Ramelli lawsuit. And I think the settlement the city made is definitely in the city's best interest. I've looked at all the pleadings in the Ivy Waste lawsuit against the city, and the city's response and counter-suit. I've looked at lots of the billings. The things that Ivy Waste has been trying to charge for are just mind-blowing. And the fact that, and I didn't know this till just now when I heard Mr. Friend say it, the fact that Ivy Waste apparently just recently said, "Well, we'll forgive all these other charges if you just, you know, let us keep the recycling and just pay us for one thing." That tells me they know all those other charges are bogus. But I've looked at the contract, you know, the contract is very clear. They get paid one fee of $1.90 per household per month for the recycling and running the drop-off site combined. But they were trying to claim they're entitled to charge separately, $1.90 per household per month for the recycling, and $1.90 per household per month for operating the drop site. That's not at all what the contract says. That they claim they're owed hundreds of thousands of dollars for street sweeping. There's no mention of street sweeping in the contract. The list of things they're trying to do just goes on and on. And I'm not going to try to itemize them, I think the public is not aware of all of these issues. But they are serious issues involving lots of money. And I'm guessing the city has been overbilled to the tune of at least $1 million a year for the three years Ivy Waste has had the contract. Wanted to make another one or two points, and I honestly don't remember now what they were.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Three minutes.
Thank you, perfect timing. Anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
Okay. We are on the original motion, motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember LaHatt. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,180. An ordinance approving an agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated for professional engineering/architectural services on an as-needed basis and an amount not to exceed $49,500 for the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement.
Have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Dunn. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,181. An ordinance approving an agreement with Meyer Engineers Unlimited for professional engineering/architectural services for assistance with permitting, inspections, plan reviews, et cetera, relating to improvements at the Louis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport and an amount not to exceed $49,500 for the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Shawwath. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,182. An ordinance ratifying an agreement with Cox Business for internet-based access for Axon virtual reality training in the amount of $9,918.64 for the Kenner Police Department.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,183. An ordinance authorizing utilization of existing state contract number 4400019558 with Havworth Incorporated to purchase office furniture and other related items through KV Workspace LLC on an as-needed basis not to exceed $50,000 annually for the Department of Finance.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember LaHatt. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,184. An ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number 4400021682 with ODP Business Solutions LLC to purchase office supplies on an as-needed basis not to exceed $20,000 annually for the Department of Finance.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember LaHatt. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,185. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Parex Men's Wear Incorporated to supply rain gear and boots on an as-needed basis in accordance with letter bid 23-2046 and an amount not to exceed $20,000 annually for the Department of General Services.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Brannigan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, I would.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, I just have a question. If the bid was $7,288, why are we putting in the contract not to exceed $20,000?
So typically, we bid out certain amounts of an item just to get an estimate of where we're at. So like, we only ask for five smalls, five mediums, but we may end up needing 15 of them. So we do a base price of what it is, and then this is basically a not-to-exceed. So we may never use it, we may not even come close to it. The last time we purchased rain gear, we've spent about $7,000. So, you know, we may never hit that $20,000, but it's just a not-to-exceed cap.
So the $20,000 is the cap?
Cap, correct.
The actual bid was the seven?
Yes, yes, so once, we're not, like after this, we're not going to place an order for $20,000 worth of rain gear, it's just as needed.
Okay, I was just a little confused, okay.
Okay, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,186. An ordinance approving an agreement with Precision Door Service to furnish and install two roll-up doors at Fire Station 379 in the amount of $42,757.30 for the Department of General Services.
Have a motion by Councilmember Shawwath, second by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember Shawwath?
Chief Dupont, you step up, please. Maybe fill some of this in here on Fire Station 379. How many vehicles are in Station 379?
Currently, one.
One, going for two doors?
We have one in the front and one in the back.
Is that what, chief, is that what this is right here, one for two doors? One for the front and one for the back, or is the door?
It's splitting one door to two, yeah.
Two for the east and none for the west?
Those, the doors that we bidding out, those is for the front door that faces William. That's actually a 27-foot door, which is extremely old doors, been there since the station was built. We spent about $18,000 repairing those doors over the last couple of years. So the best thing for us to do is to cut them down in half to a more manageable size, split them into almost equal-sized doors, the minimum statute now for firehouse doors is 14 feet. So one of them will be 14, one will be less than 14, and that's the one we'll use for that apparatus. But it will save us on repair costs going forward with those, with that station. Because those 27-foot-plus doors are extremely expensive to maintain.
Yes, sir, without a doubt, and I know that parts are getting harder and harder to find. And for those people who don't know it, the front door, east door, and the back door, the west door, are both the same.
Right.
You know, they're the same sized doors, the same exact. So my question is, we only got one vehicle there.
Yes.
So why two doors? And why just the east and not both of them at one time? That way, we solve the problem and we don't have to come back and do this again.
Right, well, we recently spent, like I said, several thousand dollars repairing the rear door, and we're not currently having problems with that and with the fiscal constraints within the budget. and we're not currently having problems with that and with the fiscal constraints within the budget. We're not, uh, investing that money into repairing it until we actually need to do that.
Okay.
So, okay, so we started this process April of twenty-two.
Oh, yeah, it's been a while.
So it's been a long time coming, they definitely deserve this door. Um, basically, so to just fix, to replace the door how it is now, we're gonna have the same issue. It's a heavy door, it's big.
Correct.
So that's why we're going to two doors for that east side. Right now, the back door is working from what I'm told. So in order to get their door fixed, we've bid this out four times with no responses.
Got it.
Um, we're asking for y'all to approve the purchase order to make this happen. Um, we were able to get a quote for someone to come out to replace that front door with two different sized doors. So it would have more of a support in the middle, so in the future, we wouldn't have the same issues. So that's where we're at now. If, if the back door fails, we'll approach that at that time, um, you know, to, we have to do the bid process and see what happens.
I know you had to almost beg.
Yeah, we pretty much did. We, we did it four times, typically three times, but we just, let's do more. So we still, um, no one responded. We were able to finally get a company out there to give us a quote. So we're trying to move forward with that quote.
Now, I'm just saying, like, we've finally got somebody. We ought to utilize them to both sides at the same time, because they may say, well, I'm not gonna do it again, and therefore, we're gonna have issues, so now we gotta back the truck up.
The only issue, there's a, pub, the public bid law has a different threshold than we have internally. So this falls underneath the threshold, so there's nothing special we need to do, we just need council approval. If we would purchase two, that would push us over that threshold. Um, we would probably have to declare it an emergency, there's a whole process you have to go through with the state. When we do emergency purchases internally, it's based on our procurement rules, but it's typically never over the state's laws. So, um, I mean, I would advise just fix what's broke now. And like I said, if, if it ends up failing, we can go back out for bid.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be proactive.
I know.
You know, if one's breaks, guess what's gonna happen to the other one?
Yeah.
It's gonna break. So we had, we finally got a contractor, I was hoping that we'd get both doors put in at one time. And I just don't see, we got one vehicle in there, why we need two, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I, I just have one, I just have one, one question on this. With that type of money, and, and I noticed that, as you said, it was the only contract, and I noticed how long, and that was only one bidder. Why just one year warranty? I mean, that's, I mean, that, you know, what I'm saying, you, you, I mean, that's the only warranty that they would give us, one year? Yeah.
Typical on those doors, um, I mean, we couldn't even get anyone to bid at all, so.
Yeah, I know.
We actually have a contractor willing to do the work, ready to do the work, um, so.
Well, the good thing is, the chief's been getting text messages about the extended warranty on his phone, right?
Yes, I got it.
So you can extend a warranty?
Mayor Glazer, did you want to say something? Oh, okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Insight for the purchase of four hundred and twenty-five watch guard off-point licenses under NASPO State of Louisiana Contract Number four four zero 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 two five nine nine zero in accordance with telephone bid number T dash twenty-three dash twenty-nine oh six and an amount not to exceed six thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents annually.
Got a motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. An ordinance approving an agreement with Lenfield Hunter and Junius Incorporated for professional engineering slash architectural services for Kenner Police Department facilities and an amount not to exceed forty nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the Kenner Police Department.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Uh, Mr., any councilmen want to speak? Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, four hundred two sixty East Royal Drive, fifth district, fifty-one years. Uh, I'm gonna direct this to you, chief. We plan on, uh, doing some upgrades or some renovations to the training complex and, uh, the police complex on, on the other end?
Well, exactly, uh, we have some property next to us. We have a long-term goal to, uh, build and, and, uh, training facility that will, will serve our purposes. As you know, right now, we use a little place across the street. Uh, but in order to do that, lobby for money from our, our, our delegation in Washington and, and Baton Rouge to pursue grants, I have to have an engineer come in, get an idea of what our needs are, uh, lay it out and do a cost estimate. So this is just for that purpose, so we can leave something in people's hands as we, we ask them for money, as we lobby for funds.
Now, one other thing I want to ask you, chief. Uh, I know this is a professional service contract, it's a no bid. Uh, was there any RFP even though we're not required to do so?
No.
So you think it would be a good idea with, with, uh, no bid contracts, to at least put it out, uh, on an RFP?
Well, you're right, we're not required to do it, but these are standard engineering rates, architectural rates, design rates. Uh, I think they're professional service contracts, 'cause we, we can monitor them, we can control the pricing. So this, I, I can guarantee you, this is not gonna get out, get out, get out of hand.
I understand, but I mean, would you consider, uh, possibly RFP somewhere down the road on contracts like this?
Well, so this is for the initial design, just to, to have an estimate, uh, so that I can leave something and, and, uh, validate what I'm asking for. If, if this goes in any further, I would, I would consider an RFP.
Okay, in the meantime, I'm gonna continue to lobby Baton Rouge and try to get all government contracts put under the state bid law. Thank you, chief.
Uh, Mayor Glazer?
And you see there's a couple of them, last week, there was some forty-nine thousand nine hundred, uh, contracts that it's under fifty and doesn't need to come to y'all. But it's, it's these companies that have multiple contracts with the city, brings it over the fifty thousand where y'all need to, 'cause when you put the legislation up that it's fifty thousand, one or all of them combined together goes over fifty. So that's why, if anyone had a question, why we have forty-nine thousand dollar contracts on, on agendas, that's what it's for. Because these companies have multiple contracts with the city.
Right, and that, that legislation was put up last year, uh, because of the problems with the hundred thousand dollar amount and the number of contracts. Uh, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety. An ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with BLD Services LLC for preventive maintenance of existing sanitary and storm sewers to increase the not to exceed amount by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new not to exceed amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Wastewater.
Got a, uh, motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Shawwath. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? Councilmember McKenney?
Um, yes, I just have a question. How much has, um, has been spent year-to-date so far?
Can Joanne?
Yeah, you want me to just answer that?
If you want, yeah, but Joanne could tell you, 'cause I, she, it's long-winded.
Um, since July first, we've spent four hundred and ninety-three thousand of the five hundred thousand, it's a two-year contract for the five hundred thousand. That was for three major forest mains. One was the forest main that all of District Five and portions of District Four goes through. And then two at the plant that the whole city sewage goes through. So those were critical infrastructure repairs that had to be made.
Okay, and then this amount is for the remainder of the contract?
This is, this two hundred and fifty thousand is to get us through June thirtieth, because there's still more repairs. And then next year, and July first, and the other five hundred thousand is in the budget for the second contract year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, four hundred two sixty East Royal Drive, fifth district, fifty-one years. One thing I'd like to ask Joanne, that she didn't mention, where is this funding coming from? And when I'm getting that, is that eighty million dollar bond issue again, I'm gonna keep hammering away at that. Where is this funding coming from, uh, Joanne? Okay. What about that, uh, what about that bond issue? It was passed nine years ago. That eighty million dollar bond issue for sewage and wastewater? Well, you gonna get it, don't worry. Okay, all right.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gonzalez?
Al, Al, can you come back to the voting, please?
Yes, sir.
If you do file a public request, which is very simple, our legal department can help you with it, it's one page. We have the information that you're looking for. We're just waiting for you to file a public request, because it would not be fair for us to give you the information without a public request. Because then everyone will be asking for the same thing without a public request. But we do have the information, it's ready to be picked up, just file a simple public request.
Thank you, uh, Jose, but, uh, I got my own methods of handling it. I don't need to consult with nobody down here. 'Cause quite, quite frankly, I handle this myself, because I don't delve into politics when I'm looking at something like this. 'Cause I don't expect any straight answers. Thank you.
But it's, it's, it's one page.
That's okay, I, I, I got it covered. Thank you, my friend.
Okay, uh, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance levying the annual tax millage rates for the year two thousand twenty-three totaling seventeen and seventy-one hundredths, seventeen point seventy-one mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation.
Teresa, what meeting, Teresa? I'm in a meeting, this comes up at. I got it. Let me start over. Item sixteen A is an ordinance levying the annual tax millage rates for the year two thousand twenty-three totaling seventeen and seventy-one hundredths, seventeen point seven one mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, on the two thousand twenty-three tax roll. The public needs to be advised that the City of Kenner will take up for consideration the millages that the clerk just read into the record on the meeting of Friday, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, at eleven AM. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the engineering agreement with Shred Kirkendall and Associates Incorporated to increase the not to exceed amount by one hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and forty dollars for a total not to exceed amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beverly Construction Company LLC to supply batched dirt and sand on an as needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty-one in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Boe Brothers Construction Company LLC to provide asphalt street maintenance in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven nineteen and an amount not to exceed one million dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from All-Star Electric Incorporated to provide traffic signal system repairs in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty-two and an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beverly Construction Company LLC to provide concrete flatwork on an as needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty-three in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from State Block Incorporated to provide masonry supplies in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Arco Company Services Incorporated to provide labor and parts to repair a Cummins six hundred KW generator number ten eighty-four in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty forty-seven in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen I is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Grimco Incorporated to supply ink cartridges as needed for traffic division in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty forty-eight in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen J is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of thirty-fifth and Ole Miss lift station electrical control panel by Tesco Controls Incorporated in the amount of six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen K is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from New Light Electrical Wholesalers LLC to provide street lights and accessories in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven fourteen and an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen L is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Sync Signal Equipment Company South Incorporated to provide traffic signal parts in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven thirteen in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen M is an ordinance authorizing a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Jefferson Parish accepting a contribution of two hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents towards change orders one and two to the agreement with Hard Rock Construction LLC for the roadway construction of West Splinade Avenue at Duncan Canal. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Got, uh, Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to, uh, inquire with the administration of the list for capital projects that we have submitted to the state. Um, I'm hoping that, that, uh, we can get, if, if we haven't gotten it already, if we can get that list each and every one of us. Uh, please keep in mind that this body, I think we have some, uh, abilities that, that, that I think it reflects, uh, very well if, if we, um, may consider resolutions and so forth for some of these projects, if not all of them. Um, also, Ms. Newton, if you can, I know you mentioned this earlier, but if you can, can you repeat the, the contact information for those people who are interested in getting a recycling bin that may have not gotten one already?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
The email address is C O K, communications with an S, at kenner.la.us. Phone number to the mayor's office, five oh four, four six eight, seven two, four zero.
Thank you, appreciate that. And, and just, just one other thing, too, I know I had gotten an email from a resident, and they were concerned with item sixteen H. I don't know who may have gotten that, that email, but, um, um, it's something that needs to be looked into, uh, what they reflected, regarding the Cummins issue. So if you will, look into that closer before next meeting, 'cause we're supposed to vote on it? If you don't, yeah, okay. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, the Splinade Mall owners had got in touch with me, uh, today and let me know that they have a contractor for the holes in Ring Road, and they're waiting for their bid to come in, uh, to get this processed. Uh, I had put six cones out there to defer the traffic, so you don't run over the holes. Uh, and especially the hole that is by the entrance to Target. And as I put on Facebook and social media, which I love, um, people were complaining that these holes are, uh, a problem. And I totally agree with them. And because they can't get to Target without going over these holes. Well, I put on Facebook that if you come from West Splinade and you turn in front of Macy's and you drive down the east side of Macy's, it'll bring you to the front of Target and you don't have to hit any holes. And then if you come from Thirty-second Street, you can turn before you get to the barricades and turn into the Target parking lot, and you can get to the front of Target without hitting those holes. I'm hoping that shortly, these holes will be filled, because it is a traffic problem, and they've had many people blow the tires out. I want you to know, I drive through that parking lot every day to make sure my cones are not knocked down or missing. Oh, one more thing. Someone dropped off a Batman TV series, Batmobile. I don't know why, I think they missed this by, uh, one administration. Adam Clark.
Item eighteen is new business. Item eighteen A was taken at an earlier juncture in the meeting. Item nineteen is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Uh, Mr. Walter Beach.
My name's Walter Beach. My address is one three three five West Mill Grove Avenue. Pessin Gonzalez, if you're looking it up. Um, I'm a paramedic for over thirty-three years, mostly in Jefferson Parish on the East Bank. The, um, on behalf, I'm here on behalf of the EMTs on the East Bank and several others all over the place. So, um, they're looking for EMS reform. This is what we do. EMS reform. There's gotta be a lot of that going on. So in two thousand nineteen, we spoke with the Jefferson Council about, um, foreseen issues that came true. So a- after several meetings with, uh, Jefferson Parish, there was a feasibility study that was sponsored by Rob, Chris Roberts. And it was a feasibility study for EMS ran by the Jefferson Parish. So it would be a municipality. That feasibility is, is done. Uh, y'all should have copies of it. Easy peasy, just put your numbers in there and see if anything's feasible with it. Um, in two thousand nineteen, I've spoke about several council meetings about EMS issues that, that really did come true. EJ was created in nineteen seventy-eight to provide EMS on the east bank of Kenner in Jefferson Parish. The, uh, prior to the sale of East Jefferson Hospital, the department was defunded and without proper leadership. In two thousand, October first, twenty twenty, LCMC purchased East Jefferson, including the EMS service. Uh, since the purchase, LCMC has provided that they are invested in Jefferson Parish. They've paid, uh, actually they implemented structures, implemented structure and stability by appointing a new director, increased pay and offer incentives. The EMS is your third service, third essential service. We work for you. We may be employed by the hospital, they may give us an ambulance, but we work for you. We're there for you. So EMS is in a nationwide crisis. Uh, since COVID leaving, uh, people have been leaving the healthcare field at alarming rate. EMT programs will be closing due to the lack of students. You can look it up on the internet, it's everywhere. EMT pay is just as competitive as Target and Hobby Lobby. The abuse of the nine-one system is on the rise, so is the call volume. Uh, the purchase of ambulances and parts is challenging, to say the least. EMS is not your enemy. EJ employees have ten, twenty, thirty years of experience. They stuck it out through the worst parts. They show up every day for you.
Mr. Beach, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Al Morella.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, fifty-one years. I want to talk about fifteen C first. Um, last year, it was reported in the Advocate that there was two hundred human safety violations at that airport and it was passed inspection anyway by the state fire marshal and the city of Kenner's code enforcement. So I want to know, this forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, is this going to correct some of those violations that were passed? Or, uh, if, if not, have we done anything concerning our article in the Advocate of all those human safety violations we had? Now, I'm not going to yield my time, the young lady can answer that question later. I want to direct this to you, I want to respond to Councilwoman McKenney. Councilwoman McKenney, what did they do before recycling? In my time, there was never no problem. You know why I don't participate in recycling? This has not got nothing to do with the environment. This has got nothing to do with anything. With a contractor getting richer off the taxpayers. Which we can attest to why we've been overcharged for this service by a previous contractor. So, in my opinion, that's all it is. Besides, it's just my, me and my wife anyway. We don't even generate a quarter of a can of garbage. So yes, I did, just fine without it back in the day and I'm doing, just fine without it right now. And I don't believe in making someone even richer off of my back. Okay? Now, I want to talk about contractors doing business in this city. They have eliminated all identification off their vehicles, we don't know who they are. There was one, two weeks ago, three weeks ago on Joey Yanni, by me, replacing a lightbulb in one of our light poles. No identification on the side of the vehicle. H and O, who does the grass cutting back here? Done eliminated all their identification off their vehicle. My question to Michael Powell, I'm going to direct this to you. Is there any law that requires a contractor doing business in a municipality to display, identify that company, have their LWCC registration license on that vehicle and they've business license, whatever it is? We got H and O, I just named a few of them. And I'm seeing more and more every day, whatever, no identification at all. What's going on here? Okay? Now, one other thing I want to direct this to you, chief. Uh, we have been having people, uh, on our roadways with vehicles with no license plates on them, not even a twenty or thirty-day paper registration. And I haven't been seeing too many lately, so I want to know what KPD has been doing to crack down on this after all. We spent millions of dollars on license plate recognition cameras and like you stated a couple of meetings ago, we just approved some more money to where we can get the VIN number off that vehicle. If, if the plate don't, you know, if there's no plate on it. So I'd like to know if you're cracking down on this or what's going on with these people running around in our city with no identif, no plate on them.
Mr. Morella, your three minutes is up.
Perfect timing, buddy. Anybody got any comments, any questions? I'd like to get these questions answered, uh, when I leave. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Morella, we are cracking down on any traffic violations that, that our officers observe. So we are, we are taking that in hand.
Thanks, chief. Ms. Doppel.
Um, Mr. Morella, the, um, item fifteen C is related only to reviewing plans that are submitted for, um, work to be done at the airport. This is not regarding any type of inspections or any type of repairs at the airport.
Anna Hernandez. Please state your name and address on the record, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Hernandez, thirty-four Roosevelt in Kenner. I'm in Highway Park, Park Neighborhood. This is my first time and I have, um, um, fear of public speaking, so please bear with me. Um, I know that my request is very low on a totem pole, however, I think it's important. I am here to plead with the city and the council to plant more trees. We desperately need trees. Um, I live in the Highway Park Neighborhood, I walk my dog every single day and my neighbors cut trees for whatever reasons at exorbitant speeds. Um, while I cannot plead with my neighbors, I can plead with the city. Uh, I see that parkways on West Esplanade and on Williams, um, the trees are being cut, but they're not being replaced. I think we need to utilize every nook and cranny to plant trees, even cypress trees that require only one in, one foot of space. We need trees that will absorb water, rainwater, um, obviously create shade, place for our animals and squirrels, for birds and squirrels. Uh, we definitely need trees. If we plant the trees now, we will reap the benefits in five and ten years. We need native trees, leafy trees that will absorb CO2 and the heat. And, um, as I drive on Williams, we have beautification projects from Wil, uh, from West Esplanade to the levee and we have beautiful tree area from West Metairie to Airline. However, there is nothing in front of Parrot's. There is only one area where, um, uh, in front of Habitat for Humanity and in front of Wind Dixies where there's actually trees. But we have room to plant trees and we need to do so as soon as possible. I also read in Kenner Star that city of Kenner received fifty thousand dollar grant to expand on beautification project, uh, on Power Boulevard between West Esplanade and Joey Yanni. And I read that they will expand six-foot, uh, concrete path to a twelve-foot concrete path. In my opinion, that's ridiculous. We don't need more concrete, we need more trees, okay? And I've been in the same neighborhood for twenty-two years, I've seen maybe five people a year utilizing that path, so we do not need to widen the path. And of course, I am not a landscape architect, I'm just a regular resident who is just noticing changes. We have fewer and fewer trees, our trees are aging, they're being beaten up by hurricanes and eaten by termites and they are being removed at very fast speeds, but I don't see any replacements. And even as I read in the, uh, code enforcement website where, um, Department of, of Parkways, I think, or Department of Works will trim trees, there is nothing about planting trees. So this is something I would like to plead with and change. We need to plant more trees. I'd like to help if I can. Uh, I don't know whom I need to go and see, but this is what I'm pleading with, to plant more trees around the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Shawwath.
You've done very well, I gotta say, pretty first time up there. Um, you are in my district and I'll kind of let you know, there is a place for a tree and not for a tree. Underneath parolons is not for a tree. In a, I'm going to say neutral ground or median that does, is not wide enough for trees, shouldn't be, those oak trees should be planted. And you may be a little bit upset with me because, oh, probably a couple of months, we'll be digging up twenty-eight or thirty-eight oak trees on Roosevelt Boulevard. But they should have never been planned there to begin with and a root system is damaging Roosevelt to beyond repair. Now we have to replace it totally. Butch Dewey Playground, approximately four acres there maybe? There's not one tree on the playground and that's what gets me. So yes, we do have to plant some more trees and yes, we're going to have to figure out where we can plant them and best utilize them for the absorption of water, for shade, for just everything, just not under parolons or in medians where they can't, there'll be a hazard and a, just detrimental to the infrastructure of the city. Okay? But yeah, I'm, I'm with you, I'm, I'll be out there with you.
Thank you, but I, I live in your district, so I understand, appreciate, but this, this applies to the entire city, obviously not just one district.
Absolutely, correct.
So I'll be very willing to help, I'd like to get involved. Uh, we have Rommel Boys, Brother Martin Boys, they need service hours, those are the guys that can dig holes. All we need to provide is, is little, you know, saplings of trees.
Ms. Hernandez, your three minutes is up, I'm sorry. Mr. Teft. Yeah, get rid of the Rommel guy down there. Mr. Teft.
Great town, thirty-seven twenty, West Loyola Drive. Uh, first of all, I just want to thank, um, Councilman Wilmot for standing firm for the people. I appreciate that and, and a lot of others do as well. The other thing I want to bring up and while I can understand the, uh, the movement, our first responders, and I've said this many times before, deserve a whole lot more than what they're getting. You know, I question whether we pay them enough, I question whether or not they have the benefits that they should have, I question whether or not that they have the, the equipment that they need when they do go out, no telling what they're going to run into. Um, and it's kind of sad when you hear of a, something that took place over ten years ago and it's just now getting resolved. And I just, um, I just find that, that it, it's very bad and it doesn't speak well for the city. Now, I know a lot of y'all may not, were here when that took place, but still, my, my contention is simple. Our first responders deserve a whole lot better and we should, as a city, be giving it to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Uh, Matthew Hotard.
Good afternoon. I'm Matthew Hotard, sixty-six Red Oak. I am a operator of the Kenner Fire Department and also the president and local fourteen-twenty-seven Kenner Fire Fighters Association. First and foremost, um, thank you, Mr. Teft, for that. Um, appreciate you being so vocal. I also wanted to thank the city administration for fixing something that has obviously taken way too long. I can tell you that, um, because of the position I am, I would like to thank you on the behalf of our retirees. I don't think you understand how much this means to not only them, but to our department. So thank you very much. Uh, I wanted to direct my question to the mayor or whoever's in the mayor's office. Um, in the beginning, I heard him say something about four million dollars for the proposed, uh, station thirty-eight on Duke Street. Um, I know that there were original plans for that station, but I do also remember Mr. Jose, when we were in the other building, saying something that there, I, I was going to ask if the plans were redone. I will say that the mayor, when we asked for it, sent us the plans for the station for us to, to see and to look at. I just wanted to know if there's any revisions, revisions from the original plans, uh, that were put out years ago? Um, and, and if, and if not, is this the finalized plans or were, are there any, is there room for looking at it as far as it goes into the working space of the department, how the station is utilized by the men and women?
You know, that was the, I guess, the latest draft that we, we had, that we got from Terrence, from the fire chief. So yeah, it's not final yet.
Okay. That was it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hotard. Uh, Mr. Richard Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown, eight twenty-four Sessions Lane, Kenner. I wanted to follow up just with a few more comments, partly to help inform the public who maybe doesn't know some of these facts and to follow up on the comments by Mr. Friend, the Deputy City Attorney, about the problems the city has had with IV waste. And I'm just going to run down a few other things. Um, Sidney Torres and IV waste are claiming now the city owes them for preparing the drop-off site. Yet Ben Zahn and Sidney Torres together had a press conference proudly announcing that IV waste had done that work on its own, out of its own pocket, at no cost to the city. They both said it was at no cost to the city. IV waste paid for it. Now IV waste wants the city to reimburse them for it. IV waste increased the count of, of, I call them household, it's actually service units, the people who have garbage cans. The number that's been agreed upon for years has been twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand households, using the term loosely. The contract is very plain that if the contractor believes the number's incorrect, it can only be increased or changed with the consent of the city. They're supposed to negotiate and agree on a number. There's been no effort from IV waste. Uh, IV waste arbitrarily raised the count they're using from twenty-two thousand to twenty-three thousand and they're getting paid per household. A dollar ninety per household, per month. The city never did agree to that increase to twenty-three thousand, they just, IV waste did it arbitrarily. They've also skipped holidays. The contract is crystal clear that in order to take a holiday, they first have to have the city's permission and then secondly, they've got to make it up that same week so that they pick up twice a week, come rain or shine, regardless of what holidays there are, and put a notice in the paper. They did not do any of that. You know, they're being penalized for skipping this past Thanksgiving, but they've skipped several holidays. I've, I've gone back and checked. I've I've gone back and checked. They are billing for taking the recycling to Baton Rouge. The contract is clear, they're not supposed to do that. From the time they pick it up at your house, it belongs to IV waste and they're responsible for all costs of getting it to whatever recycling facility they're using. They're using one in Baton Rouge, and they're charging the city for taking it to Baton Rouge. The that violates the contract. Their claim that that about half of the recyclables are contaminated and have to be thrown out, i- it's just not a credible claim, in my opinion. I've I've also toured the recycling facility at at Elmwood and Harahan, and the manager there told us that Kenner's recycling, before IV waste took it over, when Remelli had it and was taking it to that facility, that Kenner had some of the cleanest recycling they handled.
Mr. Brown?
My time up?
Your time's up.
Okay. But I think.
Thank you.
Well, Ken- Kenner does know how to recycle, and I think IV's claim that half of it's contaminated is just bogus.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. State your name, address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. My name is Ryan Nugent, I live at fifty-four forty-four Erlanger in District Three. I've spoken before this council on the subject of street lighting, and it's what I'm here to speak about again today. Some recent developments have reinforced the sense of urgency with which I'm approaching this issue, and over the course of the next few meetings, I'll be expanding on various aspects. However, instead of jumping into those specifics today, I'm going to read experts from a Forbes magazine article which conveys one of these issues and the one reason for the urgency better than I ever could. The writer in this case is from New York. I can see the enemy advancing by the day. The sidewalks that crisscross my Brooklyn neighborhood have mostly changed over to the new-fangled LED streetlights, while my block, a quiet residential side street, remains bathed in the orange glow of classic sodium vapor lights, at least for now. Every night that I find myself walking home under this reassuring glow, I know that it could be the last. Now, you may know this change is fraught with issues. LED streetlights are decidedly less romantic, they add to light pollution, they totally mess with our circadian rhythms, and are flat-out ugly. What you may not know is that this transition is all the more tragic because almost all of these drawbacks could be avoided. LED lights are incredibly versatile pieces of technology. The problem with the current rollout of LED lights is that it seems to be executed without any regard for these issues or their possible solutions. Instead of indiscriminately blasting white light, it would be possible, in fact, not terribly difficult, to settle on a solution that offers the safety of a well-lit street in a way that doesn't absolutely ruin our sleep or overall health. And this is a major public health issue. These streetlights are built to last a long time, and every block that gets switched over without concern for the health consequences could subject a generation of city dwellers to health issues that are only now being, uh that we are only now beginning to understand. An ever-growing body of research suggests that ambient exposure to blue and white light prior to and during sleep can lead to a huge array of problems that go far beyond fatigue. And that's it for the article. Now, as I've said before, Kenner is pretty late to the game when it comes to the LED transition. This article was written way back in twenty sixteen when New York was transitioning its lights to LEDs. Other cities like Phoenix started all the way back in two thousand and seven. We have countless examples to learn from, including cities who've done it right, and there's no question LED tech has come a long way in the last several years. What we need to do is set aside time to examine the issue and develop appropriate standards for the city of Kenner. I strongly oppose approval of item sixteen K from the ordinances and summary until such standards are established. It is insane to spend another three hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money before we do so. Thank you.
Lynette's, okay. Uh Robert Westenheimer? That's it? Counselor Clark?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh, wait, fire chief?
If you don't mind, can I address a few issues, because it seemed like a lot has came out during this meeting regarding first responders and fire department and all this other stuff. Uh first of all, I want to thank you, council, for approving the settlement that we worked on over the weekend for these firefighters. I was part of that settlement in New Orleans that Attorney Louis Robine spoke of earlier that took over thirty years for guys to get pennies on the dollar for, and you didn't take that approach with these guys, and I really appreciate you doing that for us. And uh Mr. Teft, yes, these guys are very well underpaid, and I've been, I've been speaking to this fact for a few months now. But the one thing, uh we are working on several other issues that's involved with the fire service, uh with other issues that's been going on for years with them. Uh promotional pay rate, one of the things we're trying to address now. But what that's gonna create is a bigger gap between the younger guys and older guys. But this administration has committed to resolving that issue for the younger guys, it's just gonna take some time and money for us to do that. As far as the EMS stuff, uh back in nineteen eighty-six, when I went through my first EMT class, the um burnout rate, or the turnover rate for paramedics in nineteen eighty-six was ten years, which mean you should have been keeping people in the pipeline for the, for ever since then. And we starting to see with the shortage of EMTs in the system now, that nobody addressed that issue years ago, and the mayor, this his administration, and the police chief and I have sat down many times to discuss how we can better provide medical service to the community and protect them. It's not our issue, it's not our fault that we are in this situation, but we need to come up with a solution to address the lack of medical service and the number of calls that we get in the city where there are no ambulances available, and some of them critical for these people, for the community. We we've also transported a couple of times in the near, in the recent past, in the firetruck people to hospitals because they didn't have ambulances available. So we have a lot of issues going on with that. We have older stations, we have older fire trucks, although we just got two new ones, we still have fire trucks from the nineties on, in frontline service in the department, and we shouldn't have that for these guys. We should have better equipment for them, better station, better training, better salaries for them. So we'll be looking at working on that for these guys going forward, and I appreciate your assistance with all that.
Thank you, chief. Um have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Willmont, Councilmember Willmont to adjourn.